Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to public audience, I just wanted to introduce the newest member of our staff. We have Mohammed Razak, who is joining us from Yukon. He is our Yukon intern for the year, getting his Masters of Public Administration. So very pleased to welcome Mohammed to us. Give us a wave, Mohammed. We begin our meeting as we do all our meetings with public audience. We invite members of the public to speak for up to five minutes. Somebody feels they need more time or want to meet with near any member separately or for a longer amount, very happy to meet with you, so just let us know. And with that, we'll begin. Does anyone like to speak for public audience? We'll go from back to front, left to right. Chris.
Chris Barnett, 15 Ocko. I just wanted to, I sent the Board of Selectmen an email, I believe, yesterday as a follow-up to a meeting I attended in Hartford on Wednesday from the Council on Environmental Quality. Carl Wagner did a presentation there regarding the letter that he was recommending that the council submit to the Siting Council regarding the solar project. And there was public audience at the meeting. And after the public audience, they did make some modifications to the letter because there were some significant concerns that council members brought up regarding a couple of items. One was, a lot of the data that was used regarding the bird count is from a 30-year-old document that was done by amateurs, and the experts in the field don't use that document because it's not scientific in their method of collection and it's old information. One of the council members did bring up that, one of the things they neglected to include in their petition was information on migratory birds. We are part of what's considered the Farmington Valley Flyway, and the Connecticut Audubon has been contacted to see if they've got any additional information about exactly what type of species should be looked at in their migratory patterns. And the other, I think, very significant item that a former member of DEEP, who is now on the council as a volunteer member, brought up was the impervious surface of the solar panels and the percentage that that took up of the land, and that he recommended that, which I'm sure our town planners are aware of, that this should, statute MS4, I don't know if it's a statute or above all, should apply to this project because it far exceeds what would be allowable in commercial installation regarding impervious surfaces. So I just wanted to bring those points up, and I wanted to thank you all for your time for listening to all of us over the past couple of months about our concerns regarding the project and your hard work. And thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Alan.
My name is Alan Kozlov. I was here last time, legal counsel for a number of residents in North Simsbury in connection with the solar project. To update you, this afternoon, I filed a application for party status for several of the abutting neighbors. I did forward, I currently copy the hearing. I also served Jesse as his required. Without going into great detail, what we have, what the relief we have asked for is that the council denied the request for declaratory ruling and/or the alternative, that they set the matter down as they may under the law for a full hearing on a certificate of environmental liability and public need, which, if I really wanted to be very fair to them and not just an advocate, I would say that's the proper thing to do. Sure, we'd like it denied, but, you know, in fairness, if they can carry the burdens associated with a certificate of environmental liability and public need, that's something that we would all like to see. A couple of the issues that we think are important, we think their evaluation of alternative, now, remember, in the context of a declaratory ruling proceeding, they may argue not, this material is not relevant. But if it were a full-blown certificate proceeding, we think that their assessment of alternative sites is very light, particularly in light of the report of the Council on Environmental Quality and of the position of the Department of Agriculture. Another key issue besides many environmental issues, I don't get the deck of it. When I look at the posture of this matter, and it has arisen out of a request for proposals, if you look at the proposal, you're really going to start to believe that this is kind of a joint venture, if you will, by the several states, who have each enacted special statutory provisions to allow for this working together on an interstate basis. That's not a bad idea, in fact, very good idea. The only problem is when states work together in matters such as this. It's usually under an interstate compact or under a, some kind of multi-state agreement. And if that is the case, then they need the approval from the Congress of the United States under Article 1, Section 10. So we'll see what the council has to say about that. There are other issues, I know we're going to be running out of time. We have, we did receive our report this afternoon from our expert. We have it under review right now, otherwise I would provide a copy to you. We want to review and see what it says, so forth. But the important thing is, it raises a lot of issues, particularly with the insufficiency of habitat review, ecological assessment in general, endangered species, species of special concern. So I'm not going to bore you with that tonight, because again, once it's finalized, we will be filing with the council as an exhibit, and we will be calling our experts in support. I think that's pretty much what our position is as of today. If you have no questions, I will leave.
Thank you. Going from back to front, left to right, Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. On Saturday, August 26th, and Sunday, August 27th, they observed the Two Left Feet Blues concert that turned the town upside down with text amendments to the zoning regulations for RVs and camping was a bust. There was poor attendance and fewer overnight campers than reported. There was an onslaught of concert attendees going to the Maple Tree for refreshments with the band jamming into the evening. There were campers at the free parking lot on the other side of Iron Horse Boulevard. Dave Ryan has made commitments that he could not enforce. A cart was placed at the CD parking lot for garbage disposal for overnight campers. Is this cart with a sign on the lot with RV overnight parking stating, "Throw all trash bags in here, a sanitary solution to rubbish removal." The Simsbury Performing Arts Center, under the direction of Dave Ryan, has become a rogue organization that has violated its contract with the town. The contract should be terminated for breach of contract. The land was purchased with taxpayer dollars for the benefit of the town. Dave Ryan has alienated all organizations using the property by changing pricing and requirements without any appeal process in place. The residents can no longer enjoy the park, and the children cannot use the playground when Dave Ryan, president of the Simsbury PAC, controls its use. First-electman Lisa Hevna has stated that she cannot control Dave Ryan, who is managing the town, first-electman Lisa Hevna or Dave Ryan. The Board of Ethics has abdicated its responsibilities by not giving an opinion on the alleged conflicts of interest that might arise from Mike Payne becoming first-electman with no executive duties. Mike Payne is a Republican candidate. Although David Moore recused himself from the discussion as chairman of the Board of Ethics, he is also vice chairman of the Democratic Party, therefore, he has some skin in the game. Why duck your responsibilities? First-electman Lisa Hevna has stated on many occasions that the town has many residents volunteering. This is completely disingenuous. There is a circulating file of a few residents playing musical chairs on various boards and commissions. According to town records, on endorsed candidates, the Democratic Party could not nominate a full slate, missing four slots. The Republican Party were missing eight slots. How can first-electman Lisa Hevna state that Simsbury residents volunteer when both parties cannot fill a full slot of endorsed candidates for various boards and commissions? According to town records, the Millwright Restaurant and Sea Tech Solar have not paid their taxes. The town has a contract with a very reputable company with years of experience in this field for search of the Simsbury's town manager. In my opinion, the company should use their time and expertise in selection process and not on focus meetings at various times. The focus should be getting the right candidate for Simsbury. The candidate should be interviewed with the selection committee, and a candidate should be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen for approval. The candidate should become a resident of the town. Recently, the town started chip sealing. Some of the road, chip sealing some of the roads. Chip sealing leaves cars with rocks hitting the body, causing damage, and is dangerous riding a bike on the rocks. It is also dangerous to joggers and walkers on the road since the rocks can hit people. Using chip sealing is a cheap way to maintain the roads and has unintended consequences with damage to property and body. Residents of Simsbury expect safe roads. Chip sealing should be eliminated. I would like to inform you that the International Skating Center of Connecticut in Simsbury is now introducing curling to the center. Curling is an Olympic sport. There are curling clubs throughout Connecticut. If you are not familiar with the sport, you can find it on YouTube. As of now, the time slot will be on Friday evening at about 9:00 PM. All the lines and targets are down on the hockey rink with the ability to have two lines of curling. Curling is a social sport for all ages. If you are interested in joining the curling activities, please call the International Skating Center of Simsbury at 860-651-5400 for more information. According to town records, the Mill Commons LLC was purchased by BW Mill Commons for $20,900,000. Dorset Crossing Apartments LLC was purchased for $36,500,000. It appears that sales of developments have become an ongoing trend. The town should track this trend on many of the approved developments.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. It's been five minutes.
It should be noted, there are 38 active foreclosures in Simsbury.
Ms. Coe, I'd be happy to meet with you at a separate time.
And there are married residents who can't support increases in taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe.
Thank you.
News feed at Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. If you want to meet separately, I'm happy to listen.
I don't want to talk to you. I want to talk to the public.
Oh, I see. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'll go back to Laura.
You guys want to start a curling team?
Yes.
I do. Can we get a Norwegian curling team? I want them. I'm in. Curling's an awesome sport.
Thank you.
Ah, I might go do that. I'll be in the Olympics. I've been telling my kids I'm going for the Olympics. This might be it. I've said so much about the Simsbury Solar, and I have to tell you.
Laura, just your name and address.
Oh, Lauren Igro for Kilborn Farms. And, but I didn't want to miss an opportunity to, again, speak about it. Every time I continue to read and I learn more, I'm astounded, I remain astounded that we would move forward with the project. Now, Chris had brought up what was discussed in the environmental quality, and what they brought up about the impervious surface is really quite amazing. And so I, of course, read all of the statutes. And time is not our friend. So to go through these voluminous statutes and try to understand what they mean is arduous. But really, at the end of the day, what it talks about is that you are required to seek a permit from DEEP. And the source of power is significant. It's Connecticut General Statute 22A-430 provides their source of power. It is a private cause of action, which means that it's not just a government action, but it can be a private source of action for individuals that are harmed by it. It's intended to make sure that we don't have storm drainage runoff. And the significance of that, impervious surface has been, is not fully defined. We've never had a project of this magnitude in Connecticut. However, in sister states, they have defined impervious surfaces, Massachusetts being one of them. And solar panels are most definitely considered an impervious surface. Connecticut General Statute 22A-498 provides the teeth. And then there's a permit for discharge that's issued by DEEP that goes through what the criteria is, including the calculation for how much impervious surface you can have per square footage. It's significant. And, and me, as an individual citizen, would not have known about that, but water experts do. And so we need to be able to look at all of these different things and understand the impact. We also have to remember that the folks that are living all along that property have well water. We also have to remember that smaller sites that have very small, less than three megawatts, are having water runoff issues. And in some instances, down south, had to be closed because of water runoff issues. So it's not a pretend thing. It's a very real thing amongst all of the other things, the magnitude of the footprint and all of the other things that have come up. So I just wanted to call those things out specifically. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I did want to say one other thing.
Yeah.
The congressional approval is also, that attorney Kozlov spoke of, is also something that is also significant, and something that I had been raising with our congressional leaders, because they had indicated that this was a state issue, and that it wasn't a, an issue that was a federal, but in fact, it is. And, and then lastly, the Siting Council can take into account sister laws, and I think that's important to remember. Massachusetts has a lot of laws that would control a project of this magnitude, and we really do have to be cognizant of that.
Thank you. Okay. Come on this way. Laura. Linda, sorry. Lisa, Linda Laura Lisa, right? There's a lot of Ls. Sorry about that.
Linda Low, 8 Kilborn Road. I just have a quick addition to the discussion of the impervious surface issues that were brought up at the Council for Environmental Quality meeting that I went to last week. The gentleman upon look, Lee Dunbar was his name of the CEQ. He was formerly with DEEP, and he looked at the map that we brought, you know, of the layout, and upon looking at that, I mean, he was just in disbelief that that could possibly go forward. His concern was that there has not been a proper hydrological analysis performed as to what would happen if there was a two-to-three-inch rainfall within a couple hours, and that there could be significant watershed, causing local flooding in homes. And he also had a concern with all the small streams as well as the aquifer. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with Dave.
I'm the president of the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. I live at 20 West Ledge Road. I want to report that the Two Left Feet Blues Fest this weekend was a wonderful event. The weather was great. The people had a great time. The promoters thought it was wonderful. Thank you for giving them permission to have camping. They didn't have an overwhelming camper turnout, but what was there was very well organized and very well done. And I thank you for that. And he's planning to come back next year and build it up year to year to year, which we want to see. Secondly, next Friday, September 1st, we have an Echoes of Sinatra concert, which is a production that's been held around the country, and should be a very, very nice event. Following that, the next weekend is September Fest, three days of fun. We hope in the sun, and invite everybody to come. Well, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Going back, we'll go to Diane.
What I have to say is pretty light, actually, this evening compared to what everybody else was saying. But first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen and all the town staff for putting so much time and effort and resources into this Deep Water Wind project. It's pretty amazing. I'm also glad the boards and the commissions in town had a chance, though a brief chance, to discuss the project and its impact on our town. I listened to the last Board of Selectment meeting while I was on vacation. These summer months, prime vacation time for residents, town staff, board and commission members, have presented a challenge for everyone except Deep Water Wind. I was impressed and thankful for the detailed information that Lisa gave at the last Selectmen's meeting concerning the project. And if residents are paying attention, she certainly laid it all out. If this project goes through as presented or scaled down in some way, I hope residents understand that neither Simsbury nor Connecticut will receive any of this green energy. Most of the people I talked to in town are not aware of that, and a lot of the articles that go out in the newspapers don't specify that fact. This decision impacts the next generation of Simsbury, not my generation. We'll have closed the door on new housing on this huge tract of remaining land. We'll have shut the door on yet another farmer. And it's ironic to me that for years and years, we lost power at the whim of Mother Nature. And yet, several years ago, the new substation rectified that problem and also gave Deep Water Wind access to the substation. But the other thing, as I drive back and forth to my house, is I see these huge nearby farmlands of Meadow Wood, I think that's what it's called, and the two large tracts of land between Dorset Crossing and the International Skating Center that are also in close range of that substation. And I imagine that these are certainly on the radar of utility solar farm developers. What Connecticut and Simsbury do now may set precedence for what happens in the future. Thank you all for listening to all of us all of the time.
Our pleasure. Thank you, Diane. Mr. Kaufman.
Shalom, welcome. I'm here this evening because I'm a little, a little confused. At the last meeting, Selectman Cook inquired as to, and I'm glad Mr. Ryan is here, or was here. And she indicated about the letter that was in the agenda at the last meeting as to, they were going to write a letter to the performing arts stating that they're not pleased with some of the carrying on that's going on at the performing arts. And they discussed it, or they said they were discussing it, and somebody was going to write a letter. And the next thing I saw, to my chagrin, was Lisa and Mr. Ryan appearing on the Jerry Lightner Show. And the first thing she opened up with was that Mr. Ryan is a volunteer, and he volunteers time and time again, and it's so nice to have somebody that volunteers. You know, I've been around a little time. I haven't fallen off a turnip truck. And I know that people get involved so they can have power. Mr. Ryan is involved so he can have power. He's a member of the town committee. He's also an ex-member of the Board of Selectmen. He's chairman of the zoning. He's chairman of the performing arts. That's, that's a conflict in itself. And he's there because he wants to be there. It's not as if he's volunteering his time. And it's time we put this fallacy to bed. I've had people approach me on various occasions that indicated they wanted to serve the town on various boards and commissions. They wanted to help with the November Walk. And when they volunteered, they were told to take a walk because they didn't want anybody making decisions for them, because there's money involved. And the town, at that time, was giving that event thousands and thousands of town tax dollars. And every time we go around, it's, oh, the volunteers, the volunteers. The volunteers are in it for what they can get out of it. And this thing, this cronyism, in my opinion, has to stop. It's time and time and time again. And you know, I went to the Freedom of Information about two years or maybe a little longer. And at that hearing, they made a ruling that the performing arts was a public agency. And all of a sudden, our attorney, Upti Kelly and Spelacy, that's another conflict. Let's, you know, if a man's gonna, if they're going to represent the town, fine. Don't represent the Democratic Party. I'm just tired of this favoritism and this cronyism. It has to stop. And at that Freedom of Information Agency, they ruled that the, in my favor, that the performing arts was a public agency. Then all of a sudden, there's talk of 401 or a 405 C1 operation or agency. In other words, you know what this says? This says that you don't have to make any reports to anybody. You don't have to tell anybody where the money is. And I'll ask you now, have you seen what he spent down there? Do you know if he spends it? Does he have an expense account? Nobody knows that. And the argument he gives everybody is, he's a 501C, and he doesn't have to give anybody information. Well, if that's the case, if that's the case, I'm a citizen, and all these people are citizens. And what happened? It was a grant given to us, to the town of Simsbury, the people of Simsbury, for that band show. It was thousands and thousands of dollars. And then an organization, Peter Gold and Rick Orlock, formed an agency, and they went around and they collected hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
And they gave that to the town.
Thank you.
And it's time to stop.
Thank you.
And naturally, that's all you get, is it's time, Mr. Kaufman, and that grin, that silly grin.
Well, I'd be happy to meet with you at a separate time. You know that.
Yes.
Is there anyone else? Yeah.
My name is Bob Dugay. I live on Nybrook Drive. You are all volunteers, with the exception of Mrs. Hevna, and I thank you for your time. I understand that this is a special meeting for whatever purpose I'm not aware, but that means you're donating more of your time to the town. And I want you to exercise your best judgment, and sometimes that involves power, to the benefit of people. We are a society where we have to, we have to track in one way or another, and hopefully we're tracking in the right way all the time. I'm actually here on a happy note, I think. I've lived in town for 30 years. I've enjoyed it. I think the town's been well-run to very well-run, with certain exceptions which have bothered me, but life goes on. I haven't talked to the town, the Board of Selectmen, I would suggest, 10, 15 years, because I've had really no need to, because I think the town is well-served. I was sort of against our change in government, but I was convinced by other former Board, first-elect, first-elect ladies, that we should change government, and so I followed their lead. I was happy to have them exercise their power over me. For whatever reason, our town, our street was chosen, I know, good reason, our street wasn't in good shape. Our street was chosen to be repaved, you know, whenever. The town work crew, or crews, plural, came and probably replaced, in our immediate neighborhood, 12 to 15 catch basins in preparation for paving, which just happened last, maybe a week ago today, I sort of forget now, or last Tuesday, whatever it may have been. And I just want to praise them. They were so, they were hardworking. Couple of days, it was bloody hot outside. They had the right equipment. They had the right equipment. They knew what they were doing. There was good management displayed, because, boy, when they needed block top for curbing, it was there. When they needed fill to fill the catch basin, it was there. When they needed concrete to form a base, it was there. It was seamless. And even one of my neighbors came over this weekend without prompting, and I had planned to do this once they were done and once the paving happened. My neighbor came over and said, boy, weren't they efficient? And I didn't prompt him, and so I told him what I was going to do here. So I compliment the town, its management, certainly of the Works Department, if that's the proper name, and each of the employees. They were friendly. When I asked them a question, they knew what they were doing. So, and I can well imagine that if we had to ask, you know, private business, we have this big thing in our country now, everything, anything having to do with the public affairs is bad, and private's always better, baloney. We were well-served. We saved money. The work was done practically as efficiently as possible. I was really impressed with the whole thing. And I asked one of the fellows, I said, how many of these did you do last year? He said, well, maybe 300. I believe him. That's more than one a day per crew. And it was a lot of operations there, between trucks coming back and forth and fill and just work. I mean, physically, they were working. They weren't, you know, times you go around, I've been to a lot of construction sites for various reasons in my life, and you see a lot of people standing on their rakes oftentimes. So they were, they were hardworking. So I've spoken positively, and I want you to understand that, I think you do. And then I just happened, I'm on the distribution list, electronic distribution list, which is a good service for the town, of your agenda for tonight. One of, one of the items on the agenda, and I don't have it in front of me, but has to do with the negotiation of a particular contract. I'm not quite sure which class of employees that may be. I'm not sure why that's being considered. I assume it's Mrs. Havener, or maybe the board itself, or whatever, who's bringing it forward for adoption. I'm not sure who negotiated, whether it's the board, representatives from the board, our lady executive, other people in town. I don't know who would do that. But I also understand from a person who may or may not know that there's salary increases. And I have been a public employee, was a former teacher. I've sat, I'm a union, came from a union household, negotiated union contracts on the employee side, so I'm committed in that way. But I'm also looking forward, I just don't understand what management process allows a town to bring forward future financial responsibilities, even if they're small, limited.
Thank you, Mr. Dugay.
In a time when there's, am I done now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. In a time when there's a huge shortfall.
Thank you.
Something is wrong. We have to look and we cannot, even if we just maintain the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Dugay.
Until we know what we're doing, we have to know what our budget is.
Thank you, Mr. Dugay.
Thank you.
Appreciate the comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak up, public audience? Joe, is that Joe?
Sure.
Thank you. That's very helpful. But I'm guessing those are blue stripes. Am I right?
Yep, Simsbury Farms, green and blue.
Good eyesight.
Hi, Joe Tracy, 40 Berkshire Way. I'll make this really brief. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service to the town. I think you guys have done an outstanding job in the thoroughness and the dedication to this particular topic of Deepwater Wind. And I want to thank the town staff that have come out and they've visited us, they've talked to us. Some of us have taken a walk, you know, not into the woods, because of course that would be trespassing. But it's quite a, it's quite a, quite a process that you have gone through, which I am very appreciative of. I also wanted to just bring this to your attention. This is the aquifer map, and if I would be so, if you would be so indulgent of me, walk over here and to show you that this aquifer, which is the second largest in town, runs right along here. And also for you that haven't been to the Cambridge Crossing project, there is a very, very steep hill right here, maybe, maybe here. And these panels are all facing this way, so the water is going to hit those. I'm very concerned, I was at that meeting with Chris and Linda, very concerned about the impervious nature of these panels and where in the world is a heavy rainstorm, which we have very many of late. Where is this water going to go? And I would not want it to go into the aquifer, and I certainly wouldn't want it to wash its house to this hill away, because there is a house somewhere in this area. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, though, anywhere in the audience?
I know you already commented.
So we, I'm happy to meet with you after the meeting. We're just doing one at a time, and.
All right.
We'd like to hear it. The publics would like to hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Kalashman. All right, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken who would like to speak?
There's one.
All right. Moving on, we will go to agenda items. We'll start with A. We have the tax refunds. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $9,156.35?
So moved.
Second? I did not check. Double-check and make sure no one has to refuse.
I'm good.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We will now go on to, I think the reason many of you are here today is to discussion about the Deepwater Wind. I did want to let folks know that I happened to have touched with Carl Wagner at the Council on Environmental Quality, actually multiple times throughout this process, and he did fill me in at the meeting last week. He also, and just, I mentioned him, we're having a meeting tonight, and he sent me a draft of what they're going to be submitting to the Siding Council. It's just a draft that has to be approved by their chair, but I will give you the highlights of what they're going to be submitting. One, they're going to, as we are, make a request that the Siding Council use a comprehensive review beyond just air and water. And so I think that's consistent with what we heard from Mr. Passaloff. It's consistent with what he said last week and what Department of Ag has put in a request that 943 apply. So that's, they're going to be consistent with that. They do point out potential impacts to wildlife and vegetation similar to what was mentioned in public audience with a few more things as well. Stormwater management, they have raised some issues, which, by the way, when you see our interrogatories, I just confirmed with our engineer, we're raising those as well. And it's also something that the Siding Council, we met with them even before these things really got rolling, they said that's one of their primary things they look at, because they have been issues with that in different parts of the state. So they're very attuned to that. And as you know, DEEP does issue the permits, and they're a party to it. And that's their job, is to make sure that that's done properly. So that is out there. And then the fourth thing they're going to look at is post-construction, post-decommissioning, inspection and management, and, you know, the funding for it. So consistent with what we have raised as well. So we're excited to see that draft. It may change, because it has to be reviewed by their chairman. But I think the general concept out there is consistent with what we've done. And I wanted to let folks know that we will be signing a contract tonight. You have in your packets information for the architects of Frost and Kent. As you know, our council recognizes that we hire a landscape architect. We have done so. To do some renderings, the renderings will be based on citizen input, commission input. So I think you won't see anything. You'll see the vinyl fence gone. You'll see berms, trees, wooden fence, consistent with the architectural area and that kind of thing that will be presented. This will be paid with, with funds we have within the planning commission and with the delay in hiring the building permit. But, and I do have a call in to the chairman of the Board of Finance, because we're close. We're using up all our contingency in the first month. So, but we will be returning, as you know, we probably heard from Sean Kimball last week, we will be returning more to the general fund. So I'm hoping that the Board of Finance will look favorably on that. And we do have a request into Deepwater Wind to reimburse for that. So there are other options, but I did want to keep the board pressed for that. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting my recommendation to this board, based on this board's input throughout the season. And I do want to recognize the members of the board who have all reached out to, not only those of you in the audience, we've all door knocked in the area, heard from citizens not just in the area, but throughout the town of Simsbury. So very appreciative. And again, to our boards and commissions who actually do a great job on their rights. I see a member from the Clean Energy Task Force who's here. Is there anyone else from a committee? Which one are you on? Oh, planning.
Zoning.
Zoning. Okay. We have Dave Ryan here as well, so thank you. So we've got zoning and Clean Energy Task Force here. So thank you for your efforts. That's very much appreciated. I think what you're going to hear me recommending tonight is, if you watched the last meeting, very similar to what I did last time. Not a lot has changed in terms of my perspective, and Martin, we're going to be recommending. As you know, the town has sort of taken a two-pronged approach to this. First, you know, we've worked to ensure that the Siding Council has the information it needs to thoroughly evaluate the project in a comprehensive manner, consistent not only with Connecticut values, but with Simsbury's values. And second, that if the project is approved, we want to be sure that they bring their A-game and the Siding Council cited in a way that is properly and appropriately, properly and appropriately cited to the area, and that environmental conservation goals are met and that Simsbury maintains a strong sense of place. So I think, you know, to summarize it in layman's terms, the project is big and ugly, and we have some concerns about the environment and the historical situation. So that's saying, now I'll say it a little bit more artfully, like I'll say it before the Siding Council. It's going to be my recommendation that the town of Simsbury opposed the Deepwater Wind Solar Petition Number 1313 as proposed and takes the following specific positions. And these, I think you'll hear, are similar to what we discussed last week. The Siding Council should use the highest level of review possible. We will also be supporting Department of Ag's recommendation that 943 does apply, and it should go through the certification process. And the alternative, if they disagree with that legal interpretation, they should do it voluntarily. If they disagree with that, that they should do a more comprehensive review at the petition level. So that's basically the town's position on that. I don't understand why they wouldn't. Makes eminent sense. It's a complex project. It's a big project. There are a number of issues that have been faced. So I'm hopeful on that. An interesting development occurred on this. This whole project has been interesting, but the Siding Council asked for a request to respond to Department of Ag's motion to deny the project and move it to the certification process. But they asked for the responses on September 14th, which is after the September 12 hearing. So I don't know what that means, other than to think that I think that they're going to grant the extension that we have requested, because why would you ask for responses after the process has begun? I don't know that for sure. There is a procedural hearing at the Siding Council on Thursday that I'll be attending, and we'll have a better idea whether they're going to postpone it or not. But that was sort of an interesting development, just on when they made the deadline. So that, that's one thing that's out there. The second point we're making, the second position, is that Petition Number 1313 lacks sufficient information and data for the Siding Council to issue a decision at this time. In terms of those issues, I think, and I think you've seen that a number of our boards and commissions have raised issues that are in their advisory opinions. You will see them in our interrogatories. We are, Environmental Professional Zuvik Carr has raised issues. The Farmington River watershed, specifically noting the aquifer area, has raised questions. We are concerned about the remediation on other tobacco fields in close proximity to the project by the same seller. And if remediation was needed on those with the same landowner, same use, why isn't it needed here? And so there are some issues there. The Council on Environmental Quality has raised some wildlife and conservation issues that have not yet been addressed. So there's just, from our perspective, they just haven't done their homework, and there's lacking insufficient information for them to make a decision at this point. The third point we are making is that if the petition is approved by the Siding Council, the project should be reduced in scope to lessen the impact on the butters and public, and the public, including the removal of the parcel located on the southern side of Hoskins. Proposed visual buffering and landscaping should be improved and based on visual elements characteristic of and already existing in Simsbury. And historical landmarks which define the character of Simsbury, including the view shed in the residence at 85 Hoskins Road and the tobacco barns located in the project site should be preserved. So it's not just the house, but the area surrounding it, because it is a significant historical view shed, and that house is of historical significance as recognized by the plan of conservation and development. And finally, a more robust financial support and decommissioning package, as is needed, to ensure that the environmental benefits and the project oversight are guaranteed. So you have copies of the draft testimony that I have there. One thing you should know, and it's going to be draft until the day we submit it, because things are changing all the time. As we get more information from DEEP and agriculture, we may add, as pointed out by, there's lack of sufficient information, as pointed out, not only by the Council of Environmental Quality, but by DEEP and Ag may be added, as we get that information. And maybe that the Deepwater Wind answers some of our questions through the interrogatory satisfactorily, in which case we will remove those as concerns. So it's a developing and working document, and again, I say this all the time, I think you want, it's, I know this is how I view public services, we base our decisions on the facts in front of us. As the facts change, we need to prepare to change our minds and reevaluate based on the facts. And this is a case where facts are changing rapidly, to the extent you've been watching it. We do go through a number of policy considerations on why 943 should apply. I think they're fairly compelling, and I would be surprised if that doesn't get granted, at least in a comprehensive review at the petition level. I can't believe that they're just going to do soil and air, but you never know. We do make the specific point that the 10-foot-high brown highway-like fence along Hoskins and County Road should be replaced if they don't remove the Hoskins highs entirely. We do have Jamie Rabbit is here, our Director of Planning, has been working with our landscape architect, and I think really done a great job, we're getting the initial renderings on that, to incorporate what our residents asked for. They don't want to see it, but they don't want to see the vinyl fence, so you'll see, I think it was maple, what are they?
Sugar maple.
Sugar maples. Our residents want.
Or like.
Sugar or like trees, and, you know, wood fence, and then a berm behind it, and some evergreens, so that a little bit more appropriate, actually a lot more appropriate to the area than what they proposed. We are recommending pollinator plantings be used throughout, and that the footprint in general should be reduced. We do point out some of the historical lack of information out there, some of the testing was not done. The site, as you know, is, could potentially be significant to the Martin Luther King era when our minority students from down south came to work there. Although we don't believe Martin Luther King worked that area or lived in that area, minorities certainly did, and that's an important part of the history of the state of Connecticut. And there were some gaps in the historical investigation that they point out and that they didn't follow up on. So to us, that's an important part of that, and we, and it was pointed out by our historic district commission in a, I thought, beautiful way. If you haven't had a chance to read their letter, it's worth reading their letter. They did a great job with that. And our Historical Society as well did a great job with that. And with that, I will open it up to the, I do want to make a couple of things. So in the policy thing section, I do point out that this is part of the tri-state bid process. And it's true that we don't, Connecticut doesn't get the credits, but there is some confusion out there. The energy just doesn't go to different houses, it goes to the grid. So it's not that any one state gets it. But who gets the credits, the renewable energy credits? And that's the state of Massachusetts. So it's not about where the power actually goes. And so I know it gets confusing, and this whole thing is super confusing, but that's one thing I just wanted to clarify for folks. But it, as we understand, in my speaking with the Commissioner of DEEP and Ag, the reason why the state of Connecticut did not choose this was agriculture, because of the prime agriculture it was on. They felt it was a competing public policy, because the landowner, Griffin, has used public policy to get a cheaper rate on their taxes. It's a 490 policy that they're using. So they pay less in taxes because they're taking advantage of a good state policy to promote agriculture. The purchasers are taking advantage of another state policy to promote renewable energy, but in doing so, they're superseding the agricultural protections there. So there's an inherent conflict in state policy. Don't get me started. We're going to go down the state, don't even say it. But, so they have some internal things they need to work out, but because of that conflict, we think that alone is a good reason to do the more comprehensive review, because there are, there are these clashes of policies. But I do want to make the point that clean energy is a good desired social good. So I don't want to give any on the impression that I don't like renewable energy or that I'm against solar, because I'm not. We have worked with the Clean Energy Task Force. We support 100% CT, which has moved to get us to 100% renewable energy. We put solar on the high school. We tried to put solar on a land, closed landfill, which is ironic, and I point out that irony in my statement, that that was not looked favorably by DEEP, which, again, don't get me started on that. You know, we have the electric vehicle charging, so this is not about, when I think about this project, I say, you know, you guys didn't bring your A-game. This is Simsbury. You didn't do. You didn't do it. This is a D or an F project, and here are the specifics of why we think so. So, and with that, I'll open it up to comments. Cheryl.
Well, I really appreciate all the effort that went into this, and I agree with it. I am particularly impressed with the pointing out of the inconsistencies in the policy objectives on the state level. And as a region, I think it's very important that we, as a town and as a state, essentially, you know, get our priorities in line. And what Deepwater Wind proposed is, does not do that. And that's why I agree with our position on this. I am hoping that with a comprehensive review, the project will be modified to make it acceptable to what, you know, Simsbury would consider acceptable and what the state of Connecticut would consider acceptable. Because, you know, we have to remember that Connecticut was opposed to this. And we got this because of a vote with the rest of the states participating. And, you know, we can't go back now and say, you know, we get a do-over, because we don't. What we need to do is try our best to influence the policy that's going to go forward in the state, because this can happen again. And it's going to happen to other towns, too. And I think we have a chance here to set some precedent and be a leader in this. And as you said, you know, we are totally supportive of clean energy projects that come before us. And usually, we have bent over backwards to try to get funds, to try to get appropriate placement, and to support them with all of our resources, but this doesn't do it. So, I'm very appreciative of your efforts here and I support your opinion.
Thank you. So I just want to give credit, this, I mean, this is the result of a lot of people's input, including every member of this board, members of the public, members of boards and committees, and especially town staff who have worked with me. This has been an ongoing labor of love, I guess you would call it. You'll see that my testimony is about nine pages long. Again, it's draft because we do expect it to change as we get new information. So I caution, caution, caution there. And I really request residents, instead of saying, "Did you flip-flop?", I hope that when they see stuff, as things come in, they'll say, "Oh, you got new information, you adjusted your thinking." That's how we do process at the Board of Selectmen level. This is not national-level stuff. I'll open it up to other comments. Cheryl.
So just from a process standpoint, just so I'm clear, this is your testimony and we're endorsing it?
So it will be...
For the entirety of your houses, it's going to work.
So I will represent this as the Town of Simsbury's position.
Okay.
If this board is willing to endorse it.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. And there was a lot of reasons why I got off land use, but one of them is that it never always made sense to me. So Jamie, can you help me out with this whole impervious surface concept? Because it obviously is concerning, but my understanding was they drill a hole, put in a concrete post, and attach a solar panel to it. And there's still dirt around it. So, are they paving and concreting the entire site? Or how does the whole site become impervious? I guess is where I'm confused.
Depends on the angle, I would think.
But the water comes off the panel and still hits the ground, right?
Sure. So I'll let Jamie, but remember, it's like if you have a roof with no gutters, things shear off.
But it still hits the ground.
Yeah.
With regards to trying to address that question, on the acres, and we'll use the general term of 150 acres of panel or solar installation and ancillary uses associated with that.
Yep.
The panel itself, in essence, you can look at it as a small shed roof.
Right.
But everything under the panel is proposed to be dirt that is vegetated. And if you look at some of the recent statements they made, as late as this afternoon, but they plan to plant a cover crop on the entire site before they disturb it. After that cover crop is planted and establishment begins, they will then use a pile-driving system to drive a post or pole into the ground.
Ground.
They're estimating that disturbance of posts to be plus or minus 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
So that physical post is creating an impervious structure in the ground.
Yep.
But any rainwater that falls on the panel will drip off and land on that vegetated ground cover, which is not impervious.
Right.
So, you know, if you really look at the definition of impervious, it's not a concrete pad, it's not a paved surface, it is going to deflect rainwater momentarily to a pervious surface.
So I will say, one of the things that they have pointed out that they found at other sites is that because when it rains very hard, it can do a runoff and it can create gullies and stuff, and the Siding Council is aware of that. There have been major problems in other areas of the state, so they are aware of that, they are working on that. That is one of the issues we have raised through our interrogatories and that we expect the Siding Council to address. They do have experts in the field who will look at this. I know that the drainage and impervious surface is something that they are particularly attuned to, because they've had problems at other sites with this.
Yeah.
With regards to the permitting process, they are required to get a state storm order permit because of ground disturbance that is in excess of five acres. So they will be required to receive that permit. That is issued by deep. There is an extensive review of the soil erosion control standards associated with that the state has. The issues of some of the runoff on the other sites throughout the state, primarily East Lime, was a significant failure of the erosion sedimentation controls. That occurred during construction.
Hmm.
It did not occur post-installation. That was a failure in ground cover and site supervision during construction.
Jamie makes a very point. I mean, a lot of these things do require state approvals, and deep has the expertise to, one, monitor it, two, evaluate it.
Okay.
And we do rely on that. But it is a state problem, to the extent, some of you guys haven't been attending, but we've been talking about MS 40 for, oh gosh, months and...
Years.
Years. So it is an issue we are well-versed in, our staff certainly has been following. Cheryl.
Just to follow up on that, Jamie, is it true? I think somebody in the public brought up that Massachusetts considers solar panels an impervious surface.
I'm not aware of that conclusion.
So we can look into that.
Can we look up to that?
Absolutely.
Because sister state regulations would be...
So we can certainly look at, I will say, I just want to caution folks, remember, this board is not evaluating the project.
No, I was just wondering if that's true.
But they absolutely will look at that. And this is an issue that is of concern to them. They have seen failures on other sites, so they are particularly attuned to that. But we will look into the policy in other states on that as well.
This is a follow-up to Sean's question. The way rainwater falls on the ground, it's, you know, if you remove the solar panels, it's falling on 150 acres.
Right.
Some of that 150 acres has no ground cover on it.
Right.
Not.
Mm-hmm.
Some does.
Mm-hmm.
So again, it influences the way that rainwater reaches the ground.
Right.
So again, the critical aspect of any project is, what are you doing during construction? What are you doing post-construction? And are you following the generally acceptable standards to handle and manage that change?
Right. I mean, so this part stays dry in the rainstorm and all the water that normally would have spread out here, it's aggregated right here.
Right.
And that's a problem there.
Right. But depending on the ground cover, it could be managed, but that's crucial, and that's something our town engineers have been paying careful attention to, because that is an issue of area of concern. So that's why when people say, "Why do you care about the ground cover?", it's for this.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, I just, I'm just...
But in the traditional sense, it's not paving 150 acres to a primary discharge point, to a retention basin, to pretreatment, to post-treatment, and then outfall.
Right.
So think about a house without gutters.
Yeah, I get it.
Depending on where the gullies are. And so that's what, why ground cover is so important. But that has certainly been raised by our engineer, I just confirmed that before the meeting.
Appreciate that.
Mike.
So, I've been sitting on the fence with this and going back and forth. I frankly think much as the rest of the Board of Selectmen have. I'm personally in favor of solar. I think it's a good thing, to the point where I have it at my home. I think it's the right thing to do. I share, Lisa spoke about her frustration about deep turning down our solar panels on the landfill. Don't have control over it, but that was too bad. But I also think that a project of this size will change the town, not for the better. And I think ultimately, the points you raised are significant, they are correct. And I also realize, we do have to wait till the last minute because things keep changing. But I think this does raise a number of questions. Would I be opposed to it if they addressed every single one of these concerns? I don't know. I really have to rethink that. I will say that for me personally, this is not a negotiating ploy. This is something that we have real concerns about. And having sat at the Planning Commission for a number of years, these are the things that you really, or that I attach value to, because you really have the ability to impact an outcome by doing good planning. And I don't think they brought their A-game. And I will go on the record as saying, the town staff in this board has really brought their A-game and has, all the boards and commissions, all of the feedback was beyond impressive. I frankly was blown away with the quality of the product we got from everybody. So, I think this is a very good draft, and I think it raised a lot of very good points.
Thank you. Chris, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, at the last meeting, I spoke to what were my primary levels of concern, and I think, Lisa, this proposal addresses those very well. I am a big proponent of the two-pronged approach. You know, one is process, and interestingly, there's really two layers to that. More and more, we're seeing there's legitimate environmental issues that just really need to be fully vetted, and they have an obligation to do that. And again, I feel they have an obligation to reintegrate Connecticut's values back into the process, because the only place where this property was considered was in the RFP process. And the Siding Council does have the actual obligation in this process to make a Connecticut-centric decision. So I feel you've positioned us extremely well on that level, as well as on the level of the impact of it if it is approved. I particularly like putting the statement right in here that, on the south side of Hoskins, it's just not acceptable to have that property being developed. So I think having that clearly in there is a very good negotiating position. So I give you a lot of credit, and this completely mirrors my thinking in terms of how we should approach things.
So I'm going to give you credit, because I really tried to capture this board's intent. This is not just something I came up with, I really tried to capture what this board has been saying over time. I tried to make this the board's position, because I hope, and I'm glad to hear that you think I've captured your positions, because that was my intention in doing it, not to be my position, but to capture what the board has been saying for many months. Elaine, did you have anything?
No, I think the proposed testimony is really dead-on for what we have now. I know we might get additional information that might require some edits and/or additions or subtractions, but I think it really echoes both what we've heard from Department of Agriculture, from deep, and also just talking to people in town. I think, you know, I heard a balance of people who were adamantly opposed, people who were kind of for, and a lion's share of people who are opposed to it as presented, but could think a project was a good idea if there were significant changes. And I think that this testimony really reflects kind of where all of those positions are coming from, and what the specificity of what those concerns are and what really needs to be looked at before we could feel good about going forward with a project like this. So, I think it's, testimony represents what I think we should say very well.
Sean.
No, ma'am, I've never lost for words.
I didn't read my, I didn't do the first select will.
Yeah, there's no first select will.
I'm holding you to that.
So it's all on you now.
Somebody was shining upon me today. I appreciate everybody in this room. I've spoken to most of you a number of times, and you probably scratch your head and wonder where I was going to come down on this, because I pushed back pretty hard, and a number of you have asked you some pretty hard questions and challenged your own thinking, as I've tried to challenge my own. I may or may not have gone for a walk in the woods to make sure that I could visually appreciate what was going to happen here as well. You know, and I've talked to each one of you numerous times on this individually, of Where it comes down to me is pretty simple. I don't think Simsbury ought to be a test case for residential solar. I think there's too many unanswered questions. I think your testimony raises a lot of those questions. And I think if ultimately the Siding Council were to approve this, I think they're probably going to regret that decision down the road, because I think we're going to learn a lot about what residential solar is really like. And a number of you have given me a lot of information about the lack of information out there in terms of impact to communities like ours, because this doesn't appear to exist anywhere else in the United States. And that's particularly challenging. And again, I think reinforces my concern that this may not be a bad project at the end of it, but we're not going to know for five, 10, 15, 25 years as we see this through. And it might end up being beautiful, and this is all, and it might work out that way. But again, I don't think that we want to be the test case for this, and as many people point out, it's going to impact other communities. I've gotten calls from legislators and community members in other communities where it's being proposed, I believe up in Enfield, and other spots, and it's particularly concerning. So I commend you for the testimony here, and I very much do support it. And then I hope the Siding Council will give this the highest level of review, because again, this is brand-new for everybody in this state, and perhaps in other states. And if we're going to do it, we damn well better get it right. Because we don't get to go back and do it over if we miss something. So I hope that everybody does the next phase with their eyes wide open, and that they do at least listen to what you're going to put forward. So, thank you for putting it together.
So, any other comments? So, I know that this is a draft, but I would still like this board's motion to endorse the draft as the town's position. Should anything substantial change, obviously, I will bring it back to you. They're just minor things, like, and we support, like this, the Council on Environmental, it's their draft. I anticipate, we're going to say, as identified in the council, the gaps identified here. And if deep and ag does that, I'll add that as well.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll go with Mike on the second. All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone's input, and thank you, members of the public who came and really helped inform the decision. We all see the world from where we sit, and we have better decision-making when we hear from people who are sitting in different seats and letting us know what's important to them. And not only those who are here today, but there are lots of members of the community, some who don't even live in the area, who gave us a lot of feedback. And I do want to particularly thank the Clean Energy Task Force, who I know is probably a little disappointed with this direction, but I think actually informed our decision on the decommissioning. Even they pointed out areas where the project was not at its A-game. And so I think there are opportunities for improvement, and certainly opportunities for an in-depth evaluation, which we look forward to. And I will keep you posted. I will be at the 34th meeting of the Siding Council, and so we'll have an update for you in terms of timeline after that, and any additional information, because it seems like you get new information every day. So, certainly not boring.
It's good.
All right. So if you guys want to stay, you're welcome to stay, but, you know, I'm not going to be offended if you don't.
Run while you can.
I will be.
Bye. The tide rises.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Bye, guys.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye. Okay, so we have before us a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Town of Simsbury and each of the three bargaining unions represented by the CSEA Service Employees International Union Local 2001. The CSEA represents about 50 Town of Simsbury employees, and these employees are divided into three bargaining units, including a supervisors' unit, an administrative unit representing mid-level managers, and a secretarial clerical and library unit covering support staff throughout the town, as indicated by the title. The tentative agreement, which is negotiated by town staff, I would like to recognize Tom Cook, Melissa Appleby, and Eric Gomes, who did the primary negotiations in consultation with this board. This board has to give the authority to town staff to, on the general approach and where we're comfortable ending up. And then town staff does the actual negotiations in consultation with our actuary and also with legal counsel. So it's a massive endeavor there. They did a great job, and Tom's going to talk about it in a second. I'm just going to do a quick highlight. The agreement attached includes a 2% wage increase for 2018 and a 1.75 wage increase for 2019. The existing terms of the contracts, as they exist, already included an increased employee pension contributions of .5 base salary for both years, resulting in net increases for most employees in terms of what they get in their pockets of a 1.5 and 1.25 base salary.[1774.73] The impact of the proposed changes in actual dollars is estimated $90,500 for 2018 and $89,000 for 19, but those don't factor in natural attrition of retiring employees. So that often goes down. As you hire someone new, the salaries reflect that, but this is the high end. And the settlements also include an increase in the employer contribution to the healthcare savings account for employees electing the high deductible health plan option, and the reason for that is to incentivize employees to transition to that high deductible health plan, which is better pressed than the long one. But I'll let Tom walk us through the very specifics of it.
I think you've covered them pretty thoroughly, but I just, as a matter of context, this is a contract re opener. This is a four-year contract, and it's important to note that the CSEA agreed at our request to withhold negotiation of wages. And in health insurance, given the likely, what we thought at the time was the likely arrival of the Affordable Care Act Cadillac tax, we weren't sure what the best approach to respond to that would be, so we agreed to do a re opener. As it turns out, we still don't know what's happening with the Affordable Care Act or the Cadillac tax, or frankly, with healthcare at all. But be that as it may, it's, we recognize that this contract reopened right in the middle of one of our tougher years when it comes to budget. This is, the negotiations move forward with the financial challenges certainly in mind, but also move forward with the understanding that when we negotiated at the outset, rather than lock these numbers in, which is what we normally would have done, we asked the union to reopen. So to essentially end up punishing them for being flexible about how we approached our healthcare and our financial challenges, we've negotiated something that gives them a very modest increase. I think, as Lisa's pointed out, the majority, a large majority of the employees are contributing an additional .5 percent, you know, they're increasing their contributions by .5 percent a year into the pension plan, which knocks their net take-home down. We also ended up increasing the cost of employee health benefits this year. So we had a couple of spikes. If we'd done nothing, there would have been a lot of people who would experience a negative salary change. So in keeping with all of that and in keeping with the direction I've got from you guys, which I'm truly grateful, we've ended up with a deal which I think provides a modest increase. As Lisa said, we know that there will be a number of people retiring in the near term. People who are retiring are all people who are at hot step. In some cases, that means that they'll be replaced by people who are making as much as $10,000, $15,000, and $20,000 less. So we can expect, and this, by the way, is also not a bargaining unit, and none of the three units have really overtime at all, except there's overtime, it's on a very rare basis. So we can expect the numbers at the end of the day to be a lot smaller than what I've represented here. That's from the bargaining table. The other thing I want to say is that I have, this is now my third and probably last bargaining session with the CSEA folks. They have been very professional. They have listened to what our challenges are, and they've done their part to try to meet halfway to get some of these deals done. And so I'm very grateful to the union leadership of all three units.
So I'll echo that. Thank you to our employees. It really is a partnership. We do try reasonable amounts, and they have been just tremendous partners with the town. Can't speak highly enough of them. And to the extent you look at the quality of the work they do, it's hard to beat. I will put them against anyone across the state of Connecticut. I do want to just make one financial point. This is within our budgeted amount. So, Sean?
So what would the net have been had we not negotiated this?
The net what?
Change in '18 and '19. What were the original salary increases for '18 and '19?
There were no changes to it. No salaries have been negotiated for the last two years.
So that was blank in the contract?
It was blank in the contract.
Okay.
And for the first two years, they were at 2.25.
Okay.
And so, trust me, this was the result of some, there was some real negotiating.
And it reflects the changed economic society and the uncertainty of the state. They recognize that. But, you know, at the same time, we do have to be fair to our employees, and we have to treat them with the respect that, one, they deserve, and, two, we would ask of anyone.
Lisa, I would just add to those sentiments. If we tried to forego this in arbitration, we would end up with some type of increase, A. And B, there's nothing that if we run into a financial crisis that we can't go back to the union and negotiate as we would in any circumstance. So I don't feel our hands are locked in any way relative to dealing with the economic situation, so.
Anyone else? Mike?
I'll add, these are the same kind of folks that we just glowingly talked about being part of the staff that helped us bring our A-game.
Absolutely.
And you need to take care of your people fairly. And it is an increase, have to acknowledge that, but at the same point, it's not an unreasonable increase, and I think it's fair to both sides.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree. Just, this is a contract that I have no problem with, but in the context of, we still don't know what the heck the state's going to do to us.
No.
And 1.75 is very reasonable in the way we've operated. Could potentially be completely unreasonable in the new world because of what we just had to do from a budgetary standpoint and what we may have to do from a budgetary standpoint. So this is my annual, remember this next year when our costs are going up 90 grand and we have to cut all the things that we love.
So I think that's a fair point.
It's not these folks' fault, and I understand that, but again, when we have to continue to absorb, you know, retirements that we never anticipated from the teacher, costs from the teacher's side and all the other potential rating that Malloy is going to do of our fund balance, it's, and I wish you would let me write that response letter.
That's why I didn't.
It just, it disgusts me.
We'd have to, like, retract half the letter, Sean.
No, it's, I mean, it is what it is. But it continues to disgust me that, you know, both sides continue to negotiate with one hand tied behind their back, and, you know, the process needs to be reviewed. If you want to talk about structural change, you know, contractual negotiations are a good place to go, and it's not these folks' fault, they're good folks, you know, but nowhere else in the free world, other than the public space, do you guarantee steps and across-the-board increases for folks? It's just not how the rest of the world spins, and for a reason, because it doesn't work, you know? So, and defined benefit plans, et cetera, I'll get off my soapbox in a second, but I understand that this is how the municipal space works, but the rest of the world does not spin this way, and there's a reason for that, so.
So I think that's a fair point. As you know, our staff has been working hard to get more people to do, instead of defined benefits, defined contribution, and we've been doing that with, through carrots instead of sticks, so that, and we have made tremendous progress there.
Yep, you've done a great job.
So where it's incremental, it's probably slower than most people would want, but I would say it's probably faster than most other towns. So I think we've done it in a way that's fair and looks at not only the benefits and what are, but also how does it impact retention and recruitment as well? Because we do want to keep our A-game.
And if I can, I think, Sean, I couldn't agree more. We are operating the system that is based on assumptions that are really problematic. But to Chris's point, we've got to navigate our way through the system as we know it right now.
Absolutely.
And in order to do that in as cost-effective a way as possible, I think we fit on the right balance. The delay in arbitration would probably have ended up in costs that were higher than what we have right now, and that's always part of my calculation in this.
Absolutely.
But as the state of Connecticut moves forward, it really has to think about how the system plays out.
Agreed.
We are still waiting for the state budget, we've been told. I have been told the week of the 20th by Representative Hampton. I've been told by others that it won't be then. To the point is, I think we have to operate on the basis that we just don't know, and it's steady on until we do know, and we do have a plan to anticipate problems ahead. We did a great job. This board did a really great job anticipating problems coming up. So we do have a plan going forward if there is a big number. If it's a super-big number, well, we're in the same boat as everyone else, but we did plan for this, and we did plan for this uncertainty, and we'll deal with it like we deal with everything else. But it is, to Sean's point, very unsettling and frustrating. All right.
I move to refer the chairman of the post. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. I have before you a motion to appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen to the Director of Community and Social Services Position Interviews. I'm recommending Cheryl Cook because she is liaison both to Aging and Disability and Community for Care. If there are no objections, we generally try, or at least I have generally tried to bring at least one other member of the board when we do any issues. She's been on the past, since this board ultimately approves. We benefit from having breadth of input. So if there are no objections, I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got your back.
We'll go with Elaine on that. Any further discussion?
Oh, there's lots of things we can say.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I may have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't know. Kathy, you can pick whoever you want on that.
Who's your favorite?
Do you have any commission reports?